Do I need him for a question?
This one, very quick going summer, isn't it?
Too quick.
It's over. What do we sense of? Our kids down south when it's back in school already has a disenter.
Yeah, but they always start school like, my sisters in Augusta, Georgia, they start like the first week in August. I can never figure that one out.
Most of my questions have is all, well, I'll start with the back one.
He's coming, he's coming right in.
I'll start with the back one first. Hi, John. Well, start with the easy question first. We need a resolution to direct the building official to make inspections of those buildings that we deemed unsafe. What, he has to make that the conclusion? Are you drafting that resolution? Because the ordinance has required it.
But once the board tells me, that's why we just did the memo to you guys today. So if you want, so we can draft it for the next town board meeting.
Yeah, well, I think, okay, we're gonna get that for the next town, which direction to make the inspection.
Right.
Okay.
Do we want it today? We can have it today. I think it'll be important. He said he can do it.
I would like it as quick as possible.
Well, if we read it on?
Yeah.
It's fine.
I think the sooner the better.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You guys okay, John?
I just want some clarification on these changes, John. I think I know the answer, but I didn't want to do it. Changes in penalties and offenses and other remedies? You have it?
Yes. Well, I'm familiar with it.
Okay. There's a rationale for this?
Yeah, basically, one of the things that came up in the grand jury report was that...
Oh, that's what I, that's, okay.
So that, that's as a consequence of that, looking back and trying to address some of the concerns that were raised in the report. And, and looking at other towns, and we compared Islet of Huntington, Brookhaven, and Babylon, off lines were the lowest of all towns. And it really makes it a penalty. And every day that they do something is an, is a continuing offense. So one thing that was learned in the National Superior case is that you have to, this should avoid the business decision from a person just saying, well, I'll do what I want to do and then deal with the consequences. So these will be severe penalties. And, so that's how that came about.
And was this a prior to other things? Forget about, let's say, illegal sand mining.
Illegal sand mining, every day you do something is an ongoing violation. This has to do with stop work orders, violations of stop work orders, site plan issues.
But we give stop, I'm not, I'm not questioning, Judge. No, no. The engineering department comes across a place that's being sand mined. They give them a stop work order, stop sand mining. Are these offenses going to apply to that also?
The stop work order is yes.
Okay, so it applies only to stop work order?
No, it's...
If you don't mind. Unfortunately, when you have the public hearing, it's not as clear as I... Kind of, kind of, John. Including but not limited to violation conditions imposed by a town board, planning board, motorcycle, BZI. It seems to me it does, John, as I...
No, that's what I'm saying, it's have to, I didn't...
Here, I give it, yeah.
Yeah, 322 has to do with all the zoning violations. If a summons is issued, as you see, it talks about engineering or control.
Yeah.
So it applies to someone who, stop work order is issued, it applies to all the stop work orders. We're trying to avoid a person saying, I'll just do this and deal with the consequences later. So the penalties are much more severe than what have been in the past. So it applies to that as well.
I assume initially it'll make, it'll deter them from making that decision. We're making them severe enough where it won't be just, well, we'll do it now and worry about it down the road.
Correct. The fines were lesser and, so what we've done is, the initial fine was set at $500 and not more than $5,000. And then it goes up from there.
Okay.
And we have a period of time, so if you do it within a five year period, we can hit them again with the heavy penalties.
John, is that a minimum fine or can a judge change any fine?
Judge can change.
Um, the minimum fine is the minimum fine.
But a judge can't change your minimum fine?
They're not supposed to.
Not supposed to, but they can do it when they want.
Well, and we found that in some instances, certain of the judges, we'd ask for a certain fine, they'd reduce it to less than what we requested.
Less than the town code?
Which has happened sometimes, but we've, I've met with some of the judges and asked them in the past, not, not just in this term as town attorney, but my prior term, that if they're gonna do that, they have to at least give us a reason why. So it hasn't been that frequent. It's happened in a couple of cases with Martin and District Court.
John, what's that section there? What does it say, section one what?
322-106.
And this one is section 112, which I think is...
The building.
This has to do now with buildings, with stop work orders.
Yes.
So you differentiated them?
Yes. Well, actually, just so you know, this was already in the code, all we did was revamp it and raise the fines.
Raise the fines. In both, in both of these sections?
Correct.
Okay, so now I'm clear.
So we didn't add new sections, we just said, and that's what the recommendation was in the grand jury report, is that your fines are too low.
Too low.
So we basically went in and increased them and addressed, addressed that issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I think, Tom, I'd like some explanation why we're going to change the gas station ordinance, just so I know in my mind what I'm, what I'm be hearing. Here, you got it here?
Well, I think this was something that I've been working with Council McCarthy with over the last several months, and I might just say that this...
Basically, what does it do? I mean...
It's increasing the size of convenience store for filling stations, that's removing some of the redundant criteria that were in the old ordinance. So we cleaned up a little bit, and now we're in the zoning category, NB shopping center business, NB's neighborhood business, shopping center business, central business, and wholesale service industry. The filling station has to have a maximum gross floor area of 1,500 square feet. And within the 1,500 square feet, what we proposed was the convenience store sales area not to exceed 750 square feet.
Do they exceed them now?
Well, if they do, they have, any new, no, the answer unless they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals or Variance is on these criteria, they don't. And we worked with, the planning department, looked at these numbers, that 750 had, was arrived at based upon the history of applications being made to increase the square footage for convenience stores. So that's how that came about. And as you might, and I'm sure you are aware, that some zoning, requests for zoning changes have been made because of the restrictions of the, on the NB zone for...
So this will make it easier for a gas station to put a convenience store, is that it, basically?
Yes. It's yes, that's basically it. And I think it's, and again, I'm not, I'm not a planner, I'm just the attorney, so our language, I think, addresses that. And you still have special exception criteria that have to be met, but we've made it somewhat easier for anyone who wants to apply, being those criteria, to get a convenience store. And again, I think the 750, 750 number was arrived at based upon the history of these type of applications.
And they first have to meet the special exception criteria before that even goes into effect.
Correct.
And the reason I, I'm not questioning it, the reason I brought it up is, on one of the hearings with the Hess station on Kings Park Road, I think that's where, where gas stations that don't have convenience stores complained that if we allowed a convenience store, that location, they just do mechanics, I guess, and sell gas. That that would be detrimental to their business, and I remember that. So that's why I'm asking why we're doing it.
Yeah, it's, or it's an advertisement for a public hearing.
The question, the question is why are we doing it?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I don't know if that guy's correct or not, the fellow complained.
I think Frank Deruby said that I memo to the board, and I think Frank did bring up some concerns, so maybe Frank wants to explain to you what he thinks those concerns are. I think you're looking at...
Here's Frank's memo.
I think it has to do with repair stations versus convenience stores, and will that have a consequence on...
Less repairs, more convenience.
Right.
Well, are we, let me just say, if the boards are sympathetic, I'm ready to hear it if we're sympathetic. We're not, our minds are not made up as a public hearing.
No, in fact, that's, that's a public hearing, is you have an opportunity to hear it, and I know Frank did a memo to the board, so, and I would suspect, and I know the board will read it and take that into consideration after hearing the public, you know, having the public hearing be heard.
So what it does is just make more gas stations able to have convenience stores?
Right. And I think the issue becomes one that the board has to consider is, will that result in the eventual withering away of the repair station because it might be, they might not be able to have a bay and a convenience store, will they...
Most, most service stations that make application have a convenience store, don't get into mechanics anyway.
Right.
So if you have an older style service station that's doing repair work, I don't think the newer version with the convenience store takes anything away from your mechanical repairs.
And if I'm a mechanic, I'm not gonna give up my, my repair garage just to sell a bar of ice cream. I might have a little convenience store, but I'm not giving it up.
And I think that's really the focus, how will it affect the market? And I think, and your point is well taken, this, this is not a town attorney talk, and this is just, common sense of it is, if you have a guy who has two repair bays, he's doing well there, he's not gonna sacrifice the repair base to expand his convenience store.
Exactly. I don't think they will. That's where the money is.
But I think the concern, at least in reading Frank's memo, Frank's here, is that this might be the death knell for the, the repair bays because the convenience stores might overtake them. But I think that's...
Is that what your objection was?
Yes. So I think, but I think the market will find its, I mean, it finds itself.
I think, I think the death knell of the repair garages came a while ago. Came with the new sale of automobiles, and, and most, many of these stations were out of business simply because they couldn't fix those cars anyway. You have to bring them to the dealer.
Techno view, so incredible.
I mean, some, there's one on the corner of me, Valero, that does very well with their, they have a four bay garage and tire changes and things like that. To go to your point, there, I doubt very much that Valero would sacrifice their bays to put any kind of convenience store in.
But that's...
Well, he has a convenience store in there. A little, small one. Yeah, it's inside.
But that's how I read Frank's memo, was basically, will the town board undertaking this expansion of the convenience store area result in doing away with the repair bays? And I think that's just a consequence of...
Technology.
Technology, and it's a market that has to find itself.
Why can't somebody, and it's a dumb question, I hope it's not dumb, it's a rhetorical question, why can't somebody with a repair bay have a convenience store?
They could.
They can.
Yeah, they can.
As long as they meet the parameters.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
What's your objection, Frank?
Well, multiple, but the, if you were to break it down, in the memo that I gave you, there are 42 gas stations in the town of Smithtown.
Forty-two?
Forty-two. Eighty percent of them, this does not impact this amendment. So in other words, what we're talking about is 20% of the other gas stations that we talked about.
And 20% of the other gas stations are what? They don't have...
On the other side, they, there are limitations on what they could do for convenient sales.
Why?
Okay, because they are in non-retail zones.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the 80% of the gas stations that we have in town are in the neighborhood business or central business or other business zones, and they're allowed to have a full-size convenience sales store like the Hess.
Up to?
Up to 1,000 square feet. And I recommend that that be changed to allow for 1,500 square feet, because the 1,000 square feet was antiquated, and I think that should be changed. So I think they should be allowed 1,500 square feet.
What's the limitations on the 20%?
The limitation on the 20% is they're allowed convenience sales only up to 350 square feet.
Why?
Because it's supposed to be ancillary and secondary to the business. It's supposed to be non-retail. But we allow them, because it's convenience, to allow them to have some, some sales of cigarettes and other products, but limited.
But to me, what's the difference? That's retail.
It's the size. One is considered to be accessory, and the other one is considered to be principal use. When you have a Hess gas station, even though they sell gas, their principal business is that of the store.
Okay, so the 20%...
Right. Are designed to have other uses such as car wash and mechanics, you know, mechanics.
Right, okay, okay.
But they're allowed to still have a small amount of convenient sales in them.
So you, you made it larger, so what's the difference?
The difference is it becomes then a retail store. And the issue that, one of the issues that I was concerned with in the next part of the hearing was that the gas stations that currently do not allow a mechanical repair, they feel that it's a convenient sales store using the area, they take that part of their efficiency, they, they come to like the prices and other things, they, they deploy. In other words, the gas stations are, all of them tend to count something else for their business. When, when the Hess comes in, they provide, they will dominate a given area. And so what we have recommended is that we separate the two. So you have gas stations mostly along Jericho Turnpike, who are in between all the other retail zones, and they have the mechanical repair or the car washes. And then they are separated from the Hesses and the other convenience...
Excuse my ignorance here, but what difference does it make if a gas station, let's say a half a mile down the road, that does mechanics? If he puts in a convenience sale, how does that hurt anybody else?
Well, no, if, if somebody else puts in a convenience sales store, you may put out the gas station that does mechanical repairs, car washes, because they can't compete. You can only have so many convenience sales stores in a given area. And what we have shown, and Dave prepared a report on this, is that we have service areas for, that cover all of the convenience sales stores. So we don't need these. And so what I'm concerned about is, whatever few remaining car repair, gas stations that we have, we ought to protect. That's basically where I'm coming from.
Okay. Excuse my ignorance, but I still don't understand. Why, he has a convenience store, he's a, let's say he's a Hess gas station, I'm a mile down the block, I have a mechanic shop in Gessel. So I put in a convenience store, how does...
And you're allowed to have a convenience store up to 350 square feet.
Well, so I want it bigger. So how does that detrimental to him?
If you are going to make it bigger, chances are you are only going to do retail on that particular site, it's a convenience store.
Oh, I see. The mechanics, the thing kind of disappears in their way.
I doubt that very much. Your mechanic doesn't, doesn't not disappear, someone sell an ice cream bar. You're a mechanic, like you take Penny's Garage, it's been there for over 100 years. You can have a couple hundred square feet more of convenience, it's not gonna stop this, of course, I expect this 100th anniversary is this year, not gonna happen.
You mentioned David, what do you have to say, David?
Zoning is normally done for providing goods and services for the community, for the town, or a town or city. And I mapped out where are the existing convenience areas. And if the ordinance went through, what would it be? And I didn't bring a map with me, but it was a very minimal area. The, if you look, like, the corner of Plymouth Boulevard and Gerald River Turnpike.
Okay.
It's on WSI. It's probably the only area that's pretty far from other retail. At Morewood, you have the CVS on one corner, and a deli and some other things on the other corner. So if you just looked at, like, adopting zoning for providing goods and services, it doesn't provide, it doesn't change it that much. It adds, adds a very small part of the town to be within a reasonable radius.
So you're saying that if the mechanic shop with a 300 foot square, 300 square foot convenience store, if he expands it, someone else goes out of business?
No, if you put a, can you, if you put a Hess in an, in an area for which, let's say there are car repairs and other types of car wash type business, they will tend to put out the, the guy with the car repair because they can't compete. Because they will not be able to sell the gas, because the Hess will dominate, sell the gas, probably because they have a convenience sales store. They pull the truck away.
Frank, did you say before that Hess, their primary business is the, is the convenience store?
Yes.
You believe that?
Yes. They don't make that much money on the gas.
But, but even if it was so, I'm, I'm, I'm losing it here, because I don't know how the mechanic shop putting, expanding his convenience store is a detriment.
Okay, what we said in our memo was that gas stations in and by themselves do not survive anymore by themselves.
Agreed.
They are accessory to something else. In other words, they are subordinate.
Okay, got it, got it.
Okay, they are either gonna be subordinate to a retail use, or they're gonna be subordinate to some type of service use. The service use being car repair, car washes and the like. And what we have currently in our zone, the way we set it up, was that for the, those that go to the retail end are in the retail zone, and that's 80% of our gas stations are in the retail zone. So they're covered. This amendment says the remaining 20% could now have a convenience sales store. And what we had planned on is that particular area to have services, not retail sales.
Right.
And what Dave, maybe there's time. And what Dave was basically saying is, which is, even though we're approaching it from two different ways, is that we're covered in terms of trade area, we don't need this. And what I'm concerned is the negative impact side. And if we close, what we've seen in the trend over the, we lost 20% of our gas stations over the last 10 years, for various reasons, not just for convenience sales stores. And what's happening is, is they're dwindling more and more in numbers. And we originally came up with this ordinance to allow convenience sales. If you recall, this was like about 12 years ago, that's a way to protect the majority of those gas stations in retail areas. And I think we were reasonably successful in doing that, because the closures of the gas stations have been mostly in the other areas. But now what's happening is, is we want to invade those areas which are wholesale type operations and bring retail in them. And I think we're about to see more gas stations close in those areas.
Well, the amount of ones that have closed, I think it's more than 20%, what's the percentage, David, you told me one time?
Well, since the peak in 1981...
I'm confused here.
We went from about 87, or 85 filling stations to about 43, 42.
So about easily down 45, 50% in fill, in stations.
Over 50%, but that's over 30 years.
And the reason these other stations have closed down is because of strict border health criteria that makes them spend over half a million dollars changing their tanks every 10, 12 years. That's why we lost all these gas stations. What you're allowing to do is, we've, we've upping to 1,500 square feet in this ordinance, which still gives you a three to four bay shop, still gives them anywhere from three to 700 square feet of convenience store area, and another 150 square feet to do whatever they want to. We're covering all three. We're not saying, stop working on cars, throw your wrenches away because you can sell some ice cream. We're just giving them the ability maybe to make a little more money and keep the gas stations in business. That's what we're doing here.
Okay.
If I could add something? I mean, I mean, I certainly realize, you know, it's the board's decision, not a planner's decision. But I think there's also an impact on the existing business districts. If, the government's not supposed to promote, or at least the state governments, the federal government can't, but the state governments are not supposed to promote or hinder competition. But on the other hand, protecting your town from deterioration is a valid public purpose. And there's a balance between the amount of retail that a town needs, and the number of people it has, and the income it has. And if you increase the supply of retail land without increasing the population or the income, you'll tend to get some deterioration. And I think if you look at the existing, like Lake Avenue, Main Street, Kings Park, Main Street, Smithtown, I think you see more deterioration in the CB zones than you see in the WSI zones. So I think from a, trying to stop the decline of the business districts, the existing downtown business districts, I think it's a good idea to try not to allow more retail in WSI. That's just my opinion.
Right now, you can have a filling station in SCB shopping center business, WSI wholesale service industry, neighborhood business, and central business.
What you're allowed to now, under the special exception criteria.
Right. But in WSI, the convenience store has to be 350 feet or less currently, right? So you have the gross floor area for the service stations, 1,500 square feet. WSI, only 350 feet of that could be used for retail convenience store sales, correct? And then the NB neighborhood business and the central business, it's currently now 1,000 square feet.
Correct.
As long as, you mean, only the special exception criteria? So if, if you're looking at this just, what we've done is, what was proposed is, take away that, of course, the, the difference between the different, the four different zoning categories. So now, what's proposed is a convenience store up to 750 square feet would be permitted in those four zoning categories. So if you look at it very simply, that's...
400 square feet.
No.
Additional.
Additional, 400 square feet. And it's taking out the significant disparity between the different zoning categories. So we're saying we treat them all, all those zoning categories alike. Maximum building gross floor area is 1,500 square feet. Of that, in these four zoning categories, you're gonna get up to 750 square feet for convenience store sales. Then, but the question that comes in is, just like Dave and Frank had said, will that ultimately have an effect in the marketplace? Will it result in a death knell for the repair bays? That's something that, I think, and what Tommy said, I think is right on target. So many of these gas stations closed down because of the owner's restrictions that they put over the health department. You watch the corner of Terry Road and Jericho Turnpike, that place is all fenced down, still closed down. There was a gas station there.
347.
Uh, no. Jericho Turnpike and Terry Road, just a little bit, little bit east on the south side. So, but again, that's determination, and something that the board has to weigh, is if this is the direction they want to do. And I think Frank lays it out very well.
Could I just ask, David? You're saying that increased convenience stores have an effect on the retail part of town?
I think that's fair to say.
But, see, I would disagree, I'm not, you guys are planners, better than I could ever be. It's a convenience store, people don't go there to shop.
But could I, could I buttress this for a second for what Dave is saying? Because we, we're talking about this from two different points of view, but I think that...
I didn't think we'd get this much discussion.
There's a difference here, I think, that is, that Dave brings in that is maybe not in my argument. We turned down a, a convenience sales, a zoning change request that was located on, in St. James, on Jericho Turnpike, and near Hillside, where the, one of the restaurants were.
Blackbeards.
Yes, of course.
And the reason we turned it down, which is the reason I still believe very strongly on, because we have another application, which I'll get to in a minute, it was a poor location for putting a convenience sales store, any, or any type of use in that location. And what happens is, is when you look at convenience sales store gas stations, they're high traffic generators during peak hours, as opposed to your service gas stations which deal with repair. And one of the things of allowing gas stations which have convenience sales stores in neighborhood businesses, because the neighborhood business locations are chosen because they're good for traffic usage. In other words, they have traffic lights, they have, you know, like, for example, where the CVS is on Jericho Turnpike, that's where, at Kings Park Road, you have traffic lights. When you don't have, when you randomly locate these high traffic generators in locations which we don't want, then you're going to have problems. Now, the application that we just received, which you gave the go ahead to have a hearing on, is if you recall, we have a gas station right next to Chow's, that's right on the corner, that's been closed for a number of years. It's on 347 and 111. It's on 347 and 111.
Oh, okay, okay, yes.
Okay, they want to come in, because they bought a residential property that's next to them, and they want to go for a zone change to put a convenience sales store right on that corner, across the street from a convenience sales store, which is the Hess that is in that particular location. The Hess has a.
Oh, okay, I know, I know.
Now, the Hess gas station, we designed, because it's merged with the shopping center, and I think we handled the, for as awkward a site, and that was a gas station site, so we, that was zone neighborhood business, and I think we did a reasonable job in trying to coordinate that with the shopping center, and we had the traffic managed in that location. The site across the street, however, I think would be wrong.
Well, that's, that's going to be a public hearing?
It's going to be a public.
So let's not discuss it now.
That was also a residential problem, Patrick.
But it was a gas station, yes.
Let's not discuss that one now.
But what I'm getting at is that location is an issue with regard to when you have higher traffic generators. And neighborhood business areas, or central business areas, or shopping center business areas are all, look at all the ones that we have in town, that we have, they're all designed by lights, traffic signals, so that you can have easy movement left and right. In between those areas, or with the areas where planners do not like retail, because we feel that they are poor locations for that.
There's not one gas station on Lake Avenue between Woodland and 25A that's by a traffic light. I don't know where you're getting that from. Not one of.
Well, it's in the CB zone.
Well, I don't know what zoning category, NB, CB.
No, it's in the CB zone, in the central business zone. You have a traffic light at both ends of the district.
It's entered a district, I mean, that's.
No, but the whole retail area, like your downtown area here, is in a good location. We don't strip them out along the roadway.
Like Ed said, the only thing we're allowing to do is let everybody play on the same playing field for 450 square feet. That's what we're talking about here.
Who's Ed?
Ed, Mr. Wayne.
And the comment, just to go back to that one for a second, I know you don't want to discuss it now. But you're going to have a convenience store, if that goes through, on one side, and a convenience store on the other side. They are totally, totally separate. That road is not the kind of road where people are going to cross, make left turns. They can't do it. One is going to serve as traffic going one way, and the other is going to serve as traffic coming from a different direction, two different directions.
And I would tend to agree with you, except it's at the wrong location.
Okay, but let, you know, we're going to have a public hearing on that. We shouldn't really discuss that yet. All right, I'm not so sure I understand it totally, but I just fail to see, David, how a convenience store impacts a retail area.
I would say, I don't want to be anecdotal, but take a look at one of the two Hess's in Kings Park, and the constant milling of people going into the convenience store now.
Oh, which two? I know one.
One on Pulaski.
Oh, the one on Pulaski, okay.
And one on Indian Head. The turnover of people going in to buy beer, soda, cigarettes, you know, candy, whatever, is like virtually non-stop, at least during the daylight hours. So if people don't buy more just because there's another place to buy stuff, so they buy it somewhere else. So if you're buying it in not one of the downtown areas, I mean, if you just hypothetically say, like, convenience stores aren't allowed in WSI at all, you're channeling the business activity into the, into the downtown.
But wait, David, let me interrupt you. Stay with the one on Pulaski.
Sure.
Has it been detrimental to the key food, which is the major shopping center? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so I'm not so sure I understand.
No, but that's in the downtown area. That's in the central business of Kings Park.
Right, right.
If people shopped, so to speak, bought $1,000 a year, $500 a year per person in a WSI zone, then they're not buying it in the CB zone.
But most of those people who are buying that product go to the gas station and get gas first.
That's true, absolutely.
But, you know, one of the things we're talking about, this special exception permit change, an area that Fred Calendri and I were talking about is on, in Kings Park, as you're going on 25A heading west, there's a 7-Eleven, there's a Shell station, and two film stations. And I think if you use that location as the possibility, if, 7-Eleven is a convenience store, that's what it is. People go in, they're going to get their beer, soda, candy, whatever they want. Now, if you have a gas station and another gas station, if they expand their convenience store, each of those, to the 750 max that they can, one of them, I think, has to get rid of its bays to do that. But now what you've done is, you've, within that block, you have potential three convenience stores. And that's the consequence that you're talking about, because.
No, but they're all in the same zone, so they could do this today. Without this amendment, they could do this today. That's, but that's, what we're saying is, if you're in the retail zone or downtown area, competition rules, whatever that is. What we're saying, and what Dave is trying to say, is if you go out of the area and you allow them, you're drawing some of the dollars that are spent in that area to another location.
But I guess, but the flip side of that is that.
Wherever they stop the gas, they don't get it.
Flip side is, the gas station hasn't opted to shut its bays and expand its convenience store, because it made a business decision, I want to do the repairs and have the bays sell gas. So it kind of, the marketplace has made its determination as to what works best for those businesses.
The one you cite is, Kings Park is an example, I think, of what we're trying to talk about. You have Eddie's on the corner, you have the Shell Station, Texaco, and Valero.
And Dairy Barn.
All with repair bays. Hess came in, put one on Pulaski, convenience store, gas, one on Indian Head Road. It didn't affect any of those four service stations that do mechanical work at all.
And 7-Eleven and Dairy Barn are still open, don't they?
Doesn't, it just doesn't.
Doesn't hold water.
It works. On the, on the corner, I was just stopped this morning, opposite of Dry Cleaner, what's that street? That's not your street?
On?
On 25 and Kings Park, opposite the Dance Studio and the Dry Cleaner.
Oh, I missed it.
Oh, Carlson. Carlson. Carlson Avenue. There's a mechanic shop there. That's a mechanic.
No, not Carlson, straight up from you, one block up from you.
Park. Oh, Park. That's Valero. No, that's Valero.
The other way.
Go east. Oh, there's a little one on Dawson.
Dawson.
Dawson, okay. Just mechanics. If Dawson wanted a convenience store, would he be able to get it under this change?
And without the change as well. He could do it today.
He could do it today. So, but let's say he did do it, and he affects the Valero.
Because my, my point.
I'm not getting it.
My point is, is that the downtown areas are suffering more than the WSI areas. And if you steer more business to WSI, you're steering it out of the downtowns.
That's the point, that's exactly the point you're talking about. 350 right now in WSI, as opposed to 750 if it was, if the change is proposed.
I think what you're going to find is, supervisor made a good example of that one on Dawson. That's been there forever.
Yeah.
It's been there for 60, 70 years.
They don't sell any gas.
They don't, and they're not, they have, they will have no interest in whatever the ordinance exists, or the changing ordinance, because they make their money. Very few people actually use those mechanic-type shops any longer. I think all, they just don't. They do it for cars, older cars. It's over. People lease, they go, it's all no-maintenance contracts, Mr. McCarthy knows it better than anybody at the table. So I just don't think it has as much of an impact, as we're saying. You could put two more Hess stations with gas and convenience, you could put, what's that one that wants to come in, Bobby, with the supermarket-type convenience store? They want to locate on the island here, somebody brand new. Not going to affect those, those two or three guys that own that. That's their business, that's their livelihood. And the same exact people use their mechanic bays year in and year out. It's the same, if I had a vehicle, which I don't, that I needed repairs done, that's where you go. They do their inspections, they do their tire changes, oil changes. I just don't think it makes a difference, that big of a difference myself.
And they sell some gas to those people that are willing to get their car serviced. Their business is not gas.
Which one?
Stores, or places like that.
Okay, it's a dilemma. You sponsored it, you should be talking about it.
I did, and everybody's had, putting their information in, which is good.
All right.
We'll hear it at the public hearing, actually. We pretty much just did the public hearing without the public, but.
You're going to have the resolutions this afternoon for?
It's on.
No, we're talking about, um, Building Department.
No, resolutions to, to direct the building official to inspect.
Yes.
We're happy to get it out.
Okay. All right. Okay, that, oh, one other one. We had a meeting a few months ago on all the changes for the BZ. Are we set on all of those?
Everything's done. The only thing we need to see, Ron, according to Russ Barnett, he needs to amend something regarding the Nessa Quad River Corridor, and it's meeting with Mr.'s all over the suite on it.
So we, well, I don't know if we've all agreed, but nonetheless, every aspect was discussed.
Right.
And it's ready to go, okay.
And Mr. Flynn, I asked to meet with, at the same time, and Russ is there, so they're all on the same call.
Okay, that's what I have. I don't have anything else.
Could I just address that for a second? You know, I.
On what? Which one?
When you're talking about the amendments, there's one in particular, I wrote amendment to the board, and the, you know, there's, let me just say, there's no question that the ordinance has to be changed on some things. And there's questions of policy and recommendations, but one of the ones that we're talking about, especially the one on height, I really is, I'm the one who has to implement that, and I have really severe problems with that. And it's not a question of, of, you know, whose opinion this is. I don't know what that term means, and I think I mentioned that to the board, and the idea of using natural grade as the measuring tool.
I just might make a suggestion. I'm supposed to meet with Russ Barnett on that, maybe myself, Russ, and Frank.
Well, I asked David to meet on the heights also this morning, because he had mentioned it. So I asked Russ to meet with him and you this week.
But, see, the reason I brought up, I remember the discussion, I'm not so sure, I remember the pros and cons in some of these. And if you're going to put it off hearing, I just wanted to know.
It was already heard.
It's up for adoption, but I think.
We've heard it, right.
We need to have secret, and Russ said there's a couple of things on the Nessa Quad River Corridor regarding the height. David had a couple of questions on the height, so I asked the three of them to meet this week.
Okay.
I think we can work that out.
All right, was that your only bone of contention?
No, there was, I think I sent a memo to the board.
I think we straightened out the side yards. We agreed with the side yards?
Yes.
It's 20, right?
It's 20, minimum of 20.
Not 10.
Minimum of 20, well, the pace of curve.
You were somewhat opposed, but it's okay.
No, I can live with 20.
Okay, so we go with that. Yeah, Frank, it is, it will be 20.
No, I can live with 20.
From the edge of pavement.
If that's the case, I can live with 20.
From the edge of pavement, right.
By the way, just, so I got a call from some guy from Florida about his sister here, and she was being summoned for a six-foot fence that she's had for the last 30 years. That's what brought this all to mind. So I called John, and I told him he ought to not, would you, being forcing six-foot fences on side yards until such time as his ordinance gets changed. I mean, I got to tell you, every place I go, I see six-foot fences, and I know they're not permitted.
Well, if she's had it there for 30 years, we positively should not be enforcing that.
That's my point, yeah, yeah. That's my point.
I agree.
And.
I mean, some of these, we, I mean, this is a fairly ongoing problem, and I agree with you.
Yeah.
What is happening here, they know they're purging their records and building, and that's fine. But what has happened is.
Excuse me, they're not really purging them, right?
No, no, I mean, they're, they're reviewing them and pulling property cards out.
Only the ones that are communist have been purged.
My point is, they go, someone buys a house, and this is fairly frequent, I think amongst all of us. The house was built in the '70s, early '60s, and they put a deck on, or whatever they did. The attorney, or the bank's attorney, either one misses it, which is their problem, we understand that, in the closing process, and the person purchases the home. Now they want to go do something, they come over and make application legally to put a shed in the yard. Building inspector goes over and finds out that the deck doesn't meet the current codes, the fence doesn't meet the current codes. So instead of going back to the '70s, when the, when the code was in effect, they're trying to initiate 2012 codes on those properties. And that's not fair either.
No, not at all.
Very similar, I mean, it's just, just not right. I mean, if the code was in, when that was built, and it met the code back then, then certainly get it on a property card, and they have to pay the property tax. We understand that.
But I believe, and I'll, you can talk to John Magino, but I believe if they can come and establish that that deck existed in 1973, when they, they bought the house, and then they sell the house, and someone says, oh my goodness.
Well, they can, John, but.
They can, but they're not.
There's a little thing called common sense.
They're not doing it.
Nobody seems to apply.
It's no different.
And they'll tell them, you got to, you got to get an architect.
I think anonymity period, after we get this done, might be something to look at for some.
Well, but here's the problem, the one, the case that I just cited to you was a complaint, we didn't go out and look at the fence. It was a complaint from a neighbor.
But I agree with you.
Who got turned down for something, and then he's got nothing, it's incumbent upon him to go and do his duty.
Right.
This will address a lot of these, this change for the BZA, the 20-foot move.
It will help some things.
Above some.
It'll help, it'll help some. I mean, the other changes will be much better, I think, in terms of that, the other ones that we're not discussing. Those are the bulk of it.
And there's more we need to work on, still.
Okay. I'm okay now. Anybody else?
Just had, I had submitted these two, one was a part-time appointment, that's executive session, or is that just a way?
I don't have any resolutions on that.
They were submitted in Minitrack. One was a part-time appointment for an intern, and the other one was just to modify a prior resolution.
Well, get the resolution to me, we'll read it on.
Okay.
We're reading on a.
I'll take care of that.
An award of a bid today.
The RFP, yeah.
Okay, I'll get them to you.
There's also, there is one for this concert, for the grant, for the street lighting, but it's up to the board. It could be read on, but it can wait also.
It's okay, I'll read them all on, give it a go.
You want to read them on?
I have no problem. You want to?
Well, it expedits the bid process. We're at the.
Then it's done.
Did you put that on before Friday 12? No, the after?
Before.
Then I should have it. Anyway, I'll move to close the meeting.
Second, 11:45.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Thank you.